Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council Meeting. And could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Martner?
Present.
Councilmember Costa?
Present.
Councilmember Lingle?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor John Lin?
Here. And this evening pitch hitting for our invocation will be Pastor Darren Hutton. Pastor?
Let's pray. Gracious and merciful God, we thank you for today, God. We thank you for the season that we gather in and all the joy and love and hope that this season brings. God, we thank you for this special night that we meet. We thank you for Cecilia Martner and God, all her years of service on this council. Pray you bless her, God. We pray for Lord Dwayne Holmdahl as he is installed as a new council member. God, pray that you would bless him in this effort. God, I thank you for our mayor. I thank you for these council members. And God, everyone who's gathered in this chamber to conduct the business of governing this great city. I ask that you would bless this city, those who govern it, those who watch over it and protect it, and those who live and work in it. I ask you to give wisdom to our council and city staff as they lead and serve to the best of their ability. Assist them in all the tasks and decisions that are before them tonight and in the coming weeks and coming years. In our Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Administrator Status Report.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, there are no items to report tonight status. However, I would like to take this opportunity to wish Councilmember Martner all the best in her prayer. And thank you.
And any other staff requests and announcements? Okay. We will be having two oral communication periods this evening because we have two different councils, the current one and then the one that will be seated after the approval of the consent calendar. So this will be our first oral communications period. And so if you would like to address us on any subject, come on down. Okay. Seeing no one rise, we'll close that and we'll come back to the consent calendar. This evening, we have only two items on the consent calendar. We have approval of the minutes of the council meeting on November 20th, 2012. I excuse my voice, it's going to struggle tonight. And the approval of expenditures for payroll of 1.266 million, a voucher register for 375,000, and a voucher register for 364,000. Is there any item that a council member would like to have taken off consent? Can you move your flag to the other side? There we go. Thank you. Seeing none, accept a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
So move.
In a second. It's been moved to second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation. Cecilia, if you would be joining me over here at the podium.
Presented to Cecilia Martner, councilmember, in appreciation of your years of service to the city of Lompoc and its citizens, December 2008 to December of 2012.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. I particularly want to thank many people that are here tonight, as well as many of you watching through the TV. And I really want to thank you for -- I really was flooded today with emails and phone calls. Thank you. Don't want to elaborate much on my last four years. I think the Lompoc Record did put a big article out today, so you more or less know what I think about. And particularly, I want to thank all of my supporters, many of them who I don't know personally. I say thank you. If it wasn't because of you, I wouldn't have had the fortitude to put up the fight that I did. So thank you very much.
Okay. So now we're going to shift gears, but we're going to take just a couple-minute break. Otherwise, we won't find my wife and I'll be in a lot of trouble. So we're going to reorganize here in a second down front, and we'll do the presentation of certificates of election, the oaths of allegiance, and the seating of myself and Mr. Lingle and Mr. Holmdahl. And we want to thank the county elections office, who worked very late to get the certification done and get it to us so that we could go forward. So we'll take a little shift and we'll meet back down front in a second.
Mr. Holmdahl, Mr. Lingle, Mr. Lin, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I --
Aye.
State your name.
John Lin.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. And please come sign your oath.
Thank you.
Which name do I use?[515.12][515.12](Laughter) And now there will be a recess where they will all eat cake and/or fruit. Here we go. And we'll have the new roll call.
Councilmember Costa?
Present.
Councilmember Lingle?
Here.
Councilmember Holmdahl?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor John Lin?
Here. And then we'll have the next oral communications. We didn't have that on here, but that's where we'd normally have it. So this is your opportunity once again to come and address us if there's something that is covered under the new council that you'd like to talk to us about.
Hello. Welcome to the new council. My name is Yedidia De Vries. I'd like to address you with regard to an item on your agenda that is agendized as a presentation and therefore does not have a public comment section of its own, and that is the presentation of options for roof stabilization of Lompoc Theater property. To keep my comments fairly brief, mostly I wanted to thank the council for moving forward with regard to the theater. As we heard at the previous city council meeting when the Urban Futures gave their general report about LHDC, they went out of their way to comment on how important it was for the city to gain control of that property and fix it up and make it as a cornerstone of our old town, of our downtown area. And also, at the same time, while thanking you for moving forward on this important and vital issue for the economic development and culture of our community, also to remind the council that the Lompoc Theater Project, of which I am a member, is also -- we are also working hard and moving forward so that, you know, as soon as you -- the council takes some actions that take control of the building and has an estate where we can step in, we'll be ready. We're working very hard to make sure that we're ready to take over as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance? Going, going, gone, back to council. And now we'll have a presentation with regard to the theater roof stabilization. And Craig, are you it? Come on down.
For the record, Vice Mayor Starbuck is leaving because he owns property near the theater.
All right. Thank you. My name is Craig Dearling with the City Engineering Division. And slight clarification on the title. What I'm providing is an update on the theater roofs, not yet to the point of discussing options for different roof types. So here's an update on the theater roofs. First, going back to the November 6th city council meeting, council-directed staff to return to the council today with a cost estimate to seal the roof of the Lompoc Theater. In attempting to perform that task, staff identified some issues beyond staff's ability to address, and engineering staff was then directed to explain our work, explain the issues we identified, and explain the solutions we recommend to achieve the council's initial goal of sealing the theater roofs. So therefore, this presentation tonight and the accompanying memo that was attached to the agenda focus on the first step of addressing the condition of the roof structures which support the roofs in order to facilitate sealing or repairing or replacing those roofs. City staff made a site visit on November 14th and observed conditions that I'll show you in the following slides. First, just to orient everyone, this is a plan of the roofs, and it's taken from a previous plan set that wasn't necessarily for the purpose of re-roofing, so it has some extra line work on it. But the red outlines are outlining the five roofs that exist there currently, and the upper right area of the slide is not a existing building or not representative of the existing building that's there. So starting off, over in this area, this is the fly tower roof over the stage. Auditorium seating area has a barrel kind of round top roof. There's a flat roof over second floor office space and a slope tile roof that you see from H Street over second floor office space. And there's a flat roof over first floor, I guess, commercial space. I didn't go in that area on our site visit, so call it commercial space. Southern elevation photo to orient you to the plan. So again, this is the fly tower roof over the stage. This round area is the barrel roof over the auditorium. This area where you can't see the roof is the flat roof over the office space. And then up here, you can just barely see a little red tile. That's the slope tile roof over the second floor office space. And being a south elevation, you can't see the first floor roof on the north side. And to the condition, starting at the fly tower roof, we weren't able to access the top of it or to see clearly the inside ceiling, but from the stage level, we see some daylight, and we're not sure whether it's open hatches, which apparently had been used in the past to exhaust smoke and things, or whether it's a roof failure. So that's something to investigate once we have ability to look at it more closely, whether from the interior or from the exterior. This is inside the auditorium, kind of typical deterioration of the ceiling and wall area, the ceiling-wall connection. And to clarify why we see it more along the walls, this is an above roof view of that roof area over the auditorium. Water would drain down slope and run along this parapet to find one of, I think there's two drains on each side. But since a lot of the roofing has deteriorated and blown off and is collecting in that gutter parapet area and likely clogging the drains, a lot of the water likely seeps through the roof and back to the -- if I can go back? Anyway, maybe not. There we go. Back to the interior photo, so that's likely why we're seeing water coming through the ceiling like that. Next, this is the flat roof on the second floor over the office space. This one appears more serviceable. There were a few small areas noted, like we mentioned in the memo, but nothing like the previous auditorium roof. And this is just top view of the tile roof over the office space. And then down in the lower -- oops. Forward ones, thanks. So down in the lower left, this is the first floor roof over commercial space, which appears the same roofing type as the second floor flat roof. We didn't walk on that one. We didn't go inside the commercial space at our site visit, but it appears similarly, possibly serviceable, not near the deterioration we see up here on the barrel roof. Also in this photo, you can see those, the two drains that are on the north side, and similar two drains are also on the south side, that are likely plugged by all this roofing that is blown off and into the gutter area and into the drains. So just overview of our thoughts about our findings and the conditions. The condition of the roofing, like you saw, varies between the five roofs. Interior and exterior visible damage makes questionable the structural sufficiency of roof sheathing, which is what you place the roofing on top of, so the more longitudinal plywood or whatever you use. So both the sheathing and the supporting structural members under the sheathing, we -- since there has been significant water seeping through the auditorium roof and we're not sure about the fly tower roof, that's why we're saying there's questionable structural sufficiency for those two roofs. In order to determine the probable scope of roof structure repair, staff plans to hire a structural engineer familiar with the building. And the scope of work that we propose for that structural engineer is a visual evaluation of the roof structures, including as much as possible the actual structural members, and to provide a brief letter report, including recommendations on the feasibility of structurally rehabilitating each roof to meet applicable building codes to support new roofs. From our discussions with a roofing professional, the level of deterioration we saw on the surface of the auditorium roof wasn't likely something you could do a quick fix for, spray something over, or seal it. It appears that it's something that needs to be completely removed and replaced, and at that point, the concern of whether or not the underlying structure would support workers to remove and replace the roof comes into question. Second scope item for the structural engineer is a concept level cost estimate for construction of the rehabilitation roof. And to clarify, like the memo explains in a little more detail than this slide, the concept level estimate is a budgeting tool based on the best available information at the time and is less detailed, less refined than subsequent estimates. Every step you get through the design process, you have more information, and the estimate can be more refined, more accurate. Third scope item is a proposal and fee estimate to prepare complete plans, specifications, and complete cost estimates necessary to obtain building permits and construct the roof structure rehabilitation project. And after the roof structure presumably is rehabilitated, then the roofs -- then that structure could support new roofs, which could seal the building. Oops, I guess I skipped two. Sorry, Ron. Could you go back one? Thanks. So as to who we've been discussing the structural work with, staff plans to hire Fred H. Schott and Associates of San Luis Obispo to perform the structural engineering review of the roof structures. Fred Schott appears to be the firm most familiar with the building roof structures because he prepared seismic structural retrofit plans for this building in the 1990s. He also has over 50 years of experience focusing on structural engineering, has performed, his website says, over 1,850 structural projects and a number of civil projects as well. Staff believes Fred may be best suited to efficiently provide the roof structure evaluation and recommendations due to his experience and specific experience with this building. Staff anticipates the structural engineering evaluation can be performed in the next one to two months, possibly this month. It depends a lot on Fred's schedule and availability. And after preparation of that evaluation report, the council should have substantially more information upon which to base decisions about performing additional work. Staff plans to return to the council upon completion of that Schott report. We estimate, again, one to two months to complete the report, and then three weeks or so to get on a council agenda. Open for any questions.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you. The one phrase in there that concerned me a little bit is when you say that after the report, council will have substantially more information. You know, a couple meetings, or I guess it was last meeting, we made no decision at all. We took no movement because we didn't have enough information. My concern is that when we get this report, we'll have more information, obviously, but we won't have enough to make a decision. Substantially more, is that going to be enough for us to make a decision? And you're probably going to say, I don't know. You know, but it is a concern of mine. I mean, in a month or two months from now, when it comes back, are we going to be back where we were last month, saying we can't make a decision on this information? So I don't know. What can you say?
Yeah. Legitimate concern. I would say that in our work with Mr. Schott, we will attempt to allow him to view as much as possible the structural members of most concern so that he can give recommendations regarding whatever work might be appropriate for those members, which could, to some extent, scope the extent of rehabilitation work that we think might be necessary in the future and possibly refine the total construction cost estimate somewhat from the current point. But you're absolutely right. It'll be based on limited investigation, so it'll be another step, but it won't be all the knowledge that we want.
Okay, thank you.
Let me share a little bit more because I talked with Fred extensively about this many months ago and gave some information to council in closed session. And Fred's analysis back in '96 for the structural retrofit was very specific and in fact drew designs for the retrofit. And what he shared was that there haven't been very large changes in that retrofit going forward, but what he was concerned about would be corrosion damage from the long-term water leak. And so this amount of money is to go in there and review that additional damage that occurred between 1996 and today, particularly with regard to corrosion damage in the steel roof members. This barrel roof is a steel truss system. It's not wood. And also to ascertain the amount of damage and the damaged areas wherever possible in the total roof truss system, the roofing on top of it, which was probably one by six or one by eights laid at an angle back when it was built. So his goal is to go in there and look at that additional damage that occurred from the last time he looked at it. So this is to index it forward, basically.
Councilmember Holmdahl?
Yeah. Along with all that is, I've known Fred for about 40 years, and he is good. He's high quality, and he's been to Lompoc several times doing other projects, came back with some good ideas. So I think what Fred comes back with will be honest and above board and all of that. The question I have is that when we come back with that information, will we have a dollar value fixing the place up? You know, we've got to have that. There's no sense in going out for another study if we don't have some dollar costs coming back with it. And the faster we can move this thing, the better off we are.
Correct. Yes. One of the scope items is a concept level cost estimate to perform the rehabilitation work. And like I mentioned, both in the presentation and kind of in part responding to Councilmember Lingle, that concept level estimate will be based on the best available information at that time. So it won't be like a final design level of accuracy or it won't be that fine, but it'll be more than we know now and based on Fred's evaluation.
And in the other, the original estimate Fred gave us, the final design was another 20-ish thousand from this point to the final design, 2023, I think. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. The one concern that I have is, of course, the timeline. You know, the rain has already started. We're looking at potentially another three months, about, give or take. Is there anything in your understanding that the community can do at this point with their resources or with the limited resources we have to do anything to stabilize that building at this point?
For the fly tower and auditorium roofs, we were -- it was suggested to us from a roofing professional that he didn't think there was a whole lot to do other than to re-roof those. We haven't seen the top of the fly tower roof, but just looking from underneath and making assumptions about its condition. But we have seen the surface of the auditorium roof, and his thought was it just needs to be re-roofed. You can't spray anything on there that you can expect to stay on and really seal the roof.
So unfortunately, there's no short-term fixes that could potentially just keep it, you know, through these next couple of months while we're waiting for this?
It doesn't appear so for those two.
Thank you.
The other thing with the stage roof or the fly tower roof is that in the original design from the original structural retrofit for earthquake, that whole thing had to be removed because of the way it had been installed originally. So any other questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Holmdahl?
I have a question or a request to the council. My understanding and what I've heard, we don't own the building. Do we know who owns the building and who's going to get the money if we go in and retrofit it? That's another concern that goes along with it and how that's going to be taken care of.
Thanks, Craig. On that subject, the State Department of Finance has announced their -- or posted their property management plan rules, which came to the city, I think, Friday, and staff's reviewing that now to determine how to go forward on the property management plan, which would be the step that we would need to get our oversight board to approve a plan going forward and to get the state to sign off on a plan going forward. And we've been waiting for, I don't know, two months for them to post something. They said they were going to post two months ago, and they came in Friday. And I have not looked said they were going to post two months ago, and they came in Friday, and I have not looked at them.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I would argue that if council's deciding that this is the path that we would like to go down, when this does return to council, I would like it to return as an item that includes the discussion of that as well, not just the cost of the roof, but how that fits in the, or re-roofing, rather, but how that fits in the grander scheme of this entire issue. I don't want to see this all alone, so I would like that to come back as a larger issue.
From my standpoint, I think we may be able to talk about the property management plan sooner, and I'd like that to come back as quickly as we have the information to talk about it. Because no matter what we decide to do, the step has to be to get title into one entity's hands to be able to go in any direction.
Right, but the difficulty with making that decision is not understanding what the liability is until we have the number that it's going to cost us, that immediate liability. That's why that decision would be difficult for me to make before receiving the cost estimate. Thank you.
Everybody's on the same page, okay. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Craig. Anybody have anything they want to say they didn't already say about that subject? No, okay. Public comment. Anybody have a comment?
Yes, my name is Tidwell, and I was wondering, are you willing to sink money into a building that you don't, the city's money, and you don't know who owns the building?
No, we know who owns it.
Oh, you do?
It has four levels of ownership and we're just trying to sort our way through that. And that was Councilmember Costa's question, was how we're going to get through that part of it. We're on the second trustee deed, the former redevelopment agency, which was also us, but we don't have control anymore, we're on the first trustee deed, and then there's a third trustee deed.
All right. Once, where will this money come from that Long Polk is going to redo this building?
That's another thing that we would need to be talking about. No decisions have been made, we're just trying to get to a point where we understand the cost of the problem.
And in the future, who will Long Polk have to have upkeep or what will that building be used for?
I don't think there, no decision's been made on any of that. There is a local group working together to, with the hopes of taking over the building. The young man who spoke earlier could give you more information on that.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering myself if that big lot next to it, south of that building, if that could be like turned into a turn lane for the traffic going through town instead of the right-hand lane at the corner?
That parcel is not part of the theater property, that's owned by another person.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pam Wall, I'm part of the theater project. And in reference to Councilman Costa's comment, unless the option is to tear down the theater, which is going to be very costly, we would be interested in hearing what the state has decided to do and what the options are with the oversight board. And if we're going to get out from under that, or you know, if that's going to get reduced, we would like to hear that before three months are up. We're working towards that end and that would be really helpful to know that as soon as possible, what the options are getting narrowed down to. Thank you.
Thank you. No, not yet, but it'll be available in the very near future. Okay, council requests. Come on back, Dirk. I'm going to start out because I'd like to talk about a workshop schedule. I've created some draft dates that hopefully work for everybody. Teresa, could you pass these out to the audience? I missed them. Error rewind, everybody set that aside. Kind of looked right at it and did it wrong. Appointments. You're supposed to be sitting next to me to keep me on track, Ashley. Okay, the first one would be the selection of the mayor pro temp for a term of one year or until a successor is chosen. Councilmember Starbuck.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Costa as mayor pro temp.
I will second that. I need a pen. Somewhere, it's in a safe place. No, I'm not using your magic marker. Okay, life is good. And I would ask the council member if she was willing to accept.
I am.
And is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, could we vote, please, with the understanding that the names aren't going to be right, but everybody's going to understand who voted? Yeah, you're welcome to vote for yourself. So the one that says Councilmember Costa is actually Councilmember Hohndahl, and the one that says Councilmember Martner is Councilmember Costa, and it's unanimous anyway. And that passes 5-0. Number four would be various appointments. So let's see, the Community Action Commission is currently Councilmember Costa. Councilmember Costa, would you like to continue in that position?
Yes, please.
Okay, and I'm going to take these as a single vote unless anyone has an objection. Liaison of the chamber is Councilmember Starbuck. Councilmember Starbuck, are you willing to continue to serve?
Yes.
Okay. The Electric Utility Joint Powers Agreement would be Councilmember Lingle.
Yes.
We do not currently have an alternate for that because we have the, oh, yes, we do. Councilmember Costa, would you like to kick that over to Councilmember Hohndahl, or do you want to keep being the alternate?
I would like to continue to be the alternate.
Okay. And there are also two staff members who are assigned to that, so this vote would include them. And the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District.
I'd like to show a correction on that because Councilmember Costa replaced me on that a while back. As the alternate.
Oh, she's on here as the alternate. Oh, not on yours, huh?
No.
Okay, got an old one. I'm happy to go either way on that, but if you'd like to save a trip to Santa Barbara, that's after a meeting that I already go to, and I'd be happy to go to it.
I would actually prefer to be the appointee to the Santa Barbara Air Pollution Control District, please.
Okay, and for an alternate? Councilmember Hohndahl, you want to step up to that one? This is different than other boards, we don't make the new guy do everything. And for Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, I'd be happy to continue to serve. Councilmember Lingle?
Yes.
Okay. And for the Breeze Political Action Advisory Committee, Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Okay. And yeah, I'll still go to the trash. No, you know what? Dwayne, you want to be trash?
I wanted to see if you wanted to be the alternate.
Say what?
I wanted to see if you wanted to take the alternate spot, but if you want him to be the...
Well, he hasn't got any first chairs, let's give him trash.
Give me trash, all right. That's why I need to cut a lot of...
Everybody okay with that?
Would you like to be the alternate, Mary Lynn? Or would you like me to continue to be the alternate?
Have you ever had to go to one? Probably better if I'm the alternate since I've gone to all of them. All right, everybody clear about all of those? Second page. The Central Coast Commission on Senior Citizens and Aging, Councilmember Lingle.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if Councilmember Hohndahl would like to take this, I have trouble making it to that meeting, and I've attended very few, actually.
Dwayne, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
It's getting better, we're giving him more. The California Municipal Utilities Association, CMUA Legislative Committee. Have you done that before? All right, is everybody okay with that?
Somebody else wants to.
I'm not looking for any more work. And then the Santa Barbara County Selection Committee, and I'll continue to do that, it meets twice a year. Okay. Any other discussion on these items? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion of second to approve the whole batch. Seconded. And the whole batch is moved and seconded. And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, and we discussed who's, it's all green, it doesn't matter. And now the Economic Development Committee. I'm slightly confused about what we're doing here. Teresa, could you help with this? I know we need to fill one seat that was vacated by the hotel representative. And do we need to approve all the rest of these? I should have asked earlier, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. We need to fill one seat, that is a representative. There are, on the slate of candidates that you have in your packets, this was a previously recommended slate for consideration by the Economic Development Committee, and we've already made several appointments to it. Those candidates that still remain for consideration are Victor Vega, Colin Welch, Roger McConnell, and Ed Schuler.
Okay. And the position we're filling was the position formerly occupied by the hotel year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It was mine. Well, these technically aren't individual appointments, we took that as a courtesy whom we did it the first time, but I would like to move Colin Welch because I believe the hotel industry is vital and he's stepped forward to fill the spot in the hotel industry.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that? Okay. And that's the only... Yes, okay, got it. And if we could vote on that, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. And then a council appointment to the Beautification Commission, and this is Councilmember Lingle's appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, is Michelle still here? I want to publicly thank Michelle for the time served on the Beautification Commission. She stepped into a commission that was somewhat struggling, and in about a year, maybe not her individually, but she has certainly energized the commission, so Michelle, thank you very much. Michelle has stepped down, and I'd like to nominate in her replacement Emily Sanders. You have Emily's application there. Emily has broad experience in, would be horticulture? Yeah, horticulture. And anyway, that's my nomination.
And I'll second that.
And Emily's here for you to say a few words, so.
Oh. Emily, would you like to say hello? No, you've got to come all the way down here to the microphone. Can't hide in the back row anymore. From now on, you have to sit in the front row.
Hello, thank you guys very much for having me here today. I'm very excited to be working with Beautification Commission and to help contribute to Long Polk's amazing space.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. And now we'll get to what I started to get to. And it passed out for everyone a proposed schedule for workshops and various other things. For the workshops, I divided into two categories. The first one, which would be for Tuesday, the 11th, will be to review the 150-ish items that were on our last two years' plan of work so that the staff doesn't have to keep tracking 150 projects, take off all the ones that are completed, eliminate any of them that we don't think are valid going forward because times change, and then to establish a work list for the ones that we want to continue from the partially completed ones. And then also review and amend or approve the six current established priorities that we use to rank projects going forward and pass any of the items that are on the list that we continue forward to the budget process because there are some, for instance, the graffiti removal would require a budget line item in the upcoming budget. It was formally handled through the redevelopment agency, which no longer exists, and it was filled with some fill-in funding that was left to get it up to the end of the fiscal year. Second would be our mandatory ethics training, just a reminder to everybody. The 18th would be our regular scheduled council meeting, and you can see the list in our council binder for that. And the 20th would be our second workshop, and the workshops would begin at 6:00 PM. And this would be to preview and prioritize new projects submitted by all of us. This would be similar to how we did it two years ago with one change. And this would, then we would review these projects for inclusion in the budget process. And for the workshops, if you remember last time, when we got done, we had five individual lists of the projects that we each submitted, and then I took a pair of scissors and I cut the lists up and put them together to try to get similar things done at the same time. So we talked about each category one time. And what I would propose here is having a consolidated agenda where we turn all of our items in, either the city administrator or I, or the two of us, depending on how the council feels, create a consolidated agenda so that if three of us make the same suggestion, we talk about it one time. And the 25th will continue to be Christmas. And then January, the first meeting falls on the 1st, so that isn't a viable date. And so by moving it to the 8th, so moving it to the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, there is a 5th Tuesday in January, so it doesn't cause a problem for February. And that would allow the, to have two council meetings in January. Secondly, it would take a council meeting off a date when both Councilmember Hohndahl and I and city administrator will be out of the city to a League of Cities event, so that would solve that problem. And then the 29th is the date that would be available for the workshop to discuss the general plan update and the meeting schedule, which we had calendared for January previously. February would be, the 5th would be the regular council meeting, the 12th would be the all-day budget goal-setting workshop where we would get the presentations from each city department, and then the 19th would be the regular council meeting on the 3rd Tuesday. Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, the meeting on December 11th, I do have a conflict with that. I have a 5:30 conflict, but if we could make this meeting at 7:00, definitely make that meeting.
That's fine.
Okay with everyone else?
Sure, we can do that. Councilmember Costa?
Mary Lynn, the January 22nd meeting, both Bob Lingle and myself will be out of town at an NCPA conference that starts at 2:00 PM on Tuesday, January 22nd.
That's problematic.
Councilmember Lingle, you can confirm that, correct? That's the information that I have?
Well, the alternative would be to go to Monday rather than Tuesday, which would be the 21st, since these would be special meetings anyway. How does Monday work for everybody?
Is that a recognized holiday? It's Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Is that a recognized, I don't know if that's a holiday, city holiday or not.
I don't think it's a city holiday, is it?
It is.
Okay.
So we'll just do, I would prefer, I'm okay with all four meetings in December and then two meetings in January, and then back to three meetings in February. and then two meetings in January and then back to three meetings in February. If you want to do two subsequent weeks in January, we might be able to do that, though.
Yeah, well, we've got the 29th already taken for the other. I don't know, city administrator, would you think our January workload could be accommodated in one meeting? So that, instead of stand by on that a second. And let's go to February while she's looking at that. February, those days good for everybody, particularly the all-day budget goal-setting workshop? Okay. Uh, how many days are you guys at NCPA?
Uh, Tuesday through Friday.
Yeah, shoots that week.
Mr. Mayor, council, if you look at, look at your future agenda list, what's scheduled for January 15th meeting, um, we can get through one meeting?
And those could be moved up to January 8th without too much difficulty?
Yes.
Okay, so let's do that then. We'll take the 22nd off, and we'll do the 8th and the, and the 29th. And, um, just, we would have an understanding that on the meeting of the 8th, if it turned out there were, um, pressing items, the meeting of the 29th could be agendized for a regular meeting followed by a workshop, if, if we get into a pickle on that. Everybody good with that?
Sure. So again, confirming, January 8th and 29th?
Correct.
Okay.
And so everybody's good with this date with the change of the 7th, of, I'm sorry, December 11th to 7:00 PM and the change, the deletion of January 22nd and the addition that January 29th could be a, a regular meeting and a workshop. I'm sorry, a special meeting and a workshop. Everybody good with that? Need to see nods all along. Nods, Dwayne? Okay. Uh, the only unresolved question is with regard to the agenda for the second workshop. Uh, from my standpoint as the chairman, it would be way easier if the city administrator and I could work on that together to consolidate items.
For the 20th?
For the 20th workshop, on, on the list of things that we're all gonna submit that we would have, um, by the 14th. Yes, we, we would all submit it by the 14th and then the city administrator would I would sit down and consolidate like items. And, you know, let's say that two of us proposed, uh, chocolate chip cookies at a council meeting, then both names would appear on that as two council members requested this item. That good with everybody?
Marilyn, should that include, um, outstanding requests that we've requested in the past or should this just be-
No, the outstanding ones are for the, the other one, the, um, the 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And, um-
How goes by the 14th, you say?
New ideas by the 14th. Existing ideas, we don't have to do anything, they will come up on the 11th. Anything that's on the 150-ish list and, um, the, a new copy will be distributed to everybody with regard to that, so everybody can look at the list and be prepared to talk about those things. And again, my objective there is, instead of tracking 150 things going forward, the goal will be to take out all of those things that are done, done, and reduce them from the list, and then just continue to track the new items that we're interested in. And also, at the same time, we'll confirm the six priorities and we'll establish the priorities for any items from that workshop. Everybody, everybody okay on that? Okay, along the way, no, I got it now. Uh, along the way, uh, I would like everybody to be thinking about what changes they would like in the council handbook, and these would also, uh, would not need to be submitted on the 14th. These are through the entire process, and then at the end of the workshop process, after the 20th, they would be handed into the city attorney for consolidation. And I know we went through this the last time and there shouldn't be too many things this time, but the other day, my attention was called to something that's in there and I went, oh, well, I read right over that last time, so. If everybody would just keep this with them and as you see things, put notes in there so that we can get it all to city attorney and then he'll do that good job he did on it the last time for us. Um, that's all I've got. I, uh, I went to an, oh, you know, there's one good one. I went to a number of meetings and, uh, I didn't, there were none that were at city expense. Um, we had a very exciting piece of news yesterday forwarded to us. Denmat has purchased another company, which they will be bringing to Lompoc, and they had alluded to this at a chamber presentation about three weeks ago. And they, uh, they purchased a company up in San Luis and they'll be consolidating that in. And the conversation began with an email I sent to them talking about what the runway extension at the airport would mean for them. And, and that, week ago, they said, well, what if FedEx would fly in here? That would give us an extra three hours every day. So we went out and looked at what FedEx flies and the, um, our aviation administrator said, oh yeah, that plane can land here. And that's, and I sent back, hey, can you fill a plane? And the response came back, well, we can fill half a plane now, but read this below because we may be do it a little, do a little better in the very near future. So, great announcement there from them and apparently they have other plans out there, so. They're, and they also picked up their last building permit for their last tenant improvement on the building on Central Avenue, so really good news. Um, now, I'll start from the left. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Um, I would just like to request a memo from the, um, from city staff in regards to the status of the Space Enterprise Center project. Thank you.
Councilmember Hohndahl, you shouldn't have very much for your-
I have very little to say because glad to be back and there's a lot of good things coming, so, uh, as you notice, the mayor's got everybody busy. And looks like we're gonna have a busy couple of months and more. And I'll be up tasting wine on the 8th of January.
He's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna teleconference with us. He's gonna- Okay, Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, along the line of memos, there was two things I wanted to ask. Um, if I could, if council could get a memo from staff concerning the light on our street. We were getting updates on that. I knew the project was approved. There was, we'd talked about it every month and now it's just kind of gone off of the radar, and I know that the light's still there, or not there, forgive me. Um-
I bet we can get an answer in a second and save a memo, but go ahead.
Okay, the, the next thing I have is, um, I noticed on our weekly update that we're under our Parks Department and Recreation that we're showing that we're going, we're doing research on a flagpole for the new community center. I know there's a lot of public interest in all that. Um, I'd like to just know what happened to our old flagpole at Ryan Park and if we could utilize that flagpole there at the community center.
I know the answer to that, too, but I think Kevin would like to share.
I'll let Theresa take the flagpole one, but the, our street signal is absolutely still going. Uh, we've ran into Caltrans. And so they, you know, the project's funded, it's gonna be built, it's just a matter of getting it permitted through Caltrans and, uh, they, and I would be happy to follow up with a memo on more details of that, but it's certainly an active-
Because that was basically the last status we had a few months ago on that.
Yes, I know, I know.
If we ask for a roundabout, would they do it quicker?
And then in regard to the flagpole staff, did take a look at the, uh, flagpole that was at Ryan Park, and that is actually a very large flagpole. It doesn't really work with the scope of the community center size, as well as the rehab work that would need to be done on it, uh, made it not as cost-effective.
The, the rehab work, it never even flew a flag. It sat empty at the park forever. I'm really curious. You know, that was a gift to the city and that's why I'm very kinda concerned about it. That came from the naval station here. And, you know, it's just something that I don't think that we as a city should cast aside as a light thing. You know, this survived for decades out on Poynter Guello, but it's appeared that it can't survive our city right now. There was a monument plaque also attached to that that I thought maybe we could move that monument to the community center vice leaving it wherever it is now in the city.
I'll have to take a look into the monument plaque. I was not aware of the monument plaque, um, but can give that further consideration.
No, I mean, it, I remember very specifically some of the wording on that, and it was from the radar station, Poynter Guello, U.S. Navy, "On Our Final Days," et cetera.
Maybe that would be a good item to put on the workshop list as a discussion of that. I have a thought on what we could do with it, too, so. If you don't wanna put it on the list, I'll put it on the list. Councilmember Lingle?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, excuse me. I attended an NCPA meeting on November 28th and 29th. Uh, these, there was some city funds. They paid my mileage and my one-night hotel stay.
Okay. Um, anything else anybody needs to share? City clerk? Want to share anything? What's she pointing at? Oh, oral communications. Yeah, that's next. Yeah, written communications, none. Oh, you have written communications.
The council received a copy of an email received from Justin Rouge regarding the status of the Lompoc Transit Center.
Thank you. And now oral communications, last two minutes to talk to us on any subject. Anyone interested? No takers? Okay, close oral communications. Uh, and we will have adjournment. We will, the Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM. No. We will adjourn to a workshop on December 11th. At 7:00 PM, followed by a regular council meeting on December 18th at 7:00 PM. Okay, I got the nod, so life is good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you putting up with my voice.